Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have a game here, so we're not gonna do that. Everybody's ready? Call the meeting of the regular common council together at seven o'clock, Monday, May 4th. Roll call.
Ron? Langen?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
Ron?
Okay, I think everybody's available except for Sarah. Next item is the pledge of allegiance. Everybody got their flag behind them? Find me here. Pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America.
States of America.
To the Republic. It stands one nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For me some appropriate meeting notice.
Meeting was noticed on Friday, May 1st. Agendas were posted at the library doors, post office, and city hall.
Thank you. For acceptance of agenda.
Davis motion to accept.
Verdic second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Here call.
Davis?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Bronn is here as well. Thank you. Yep.
Are there any personal appearances for agenda and non-agenda items? Not hearing anyone. We'll move on to the minutes. Next item is to consider the minutes from the April 20th council meeting.
Bronn, make a motion to approve the minutes from April 20th, 2020 council meeting.
And second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, roll call.
Ron? Yes. Radke?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion. Next one is to approve the minutes for the April 21st reorganization of council meeting.
Davis motion to approve.
Verdic second.
Second.
You'll flip city.
Yes.
Any corrections or additions on that?
Yeah, I had just one.
Okay.
I think the motion and second to adjourn was flipped.
Well, check the record and make that correction.
Anyone else? This was awful. What was that?
Reynolds made the motion and I seconded. I swear that was just a test.
Okay.
New guy.
Yes.
No other, no other corrections?
Davis?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Motion passes. Move on to finance. Motion to approve the bills and payroll vouchers.
Davis motion to approve bills and payroll vouchers in the amount of $132,223.27.
Reynolds second.
Bronn second.
Any questions on the bills?
I got, I got a couple real quick ones. On page 12. First one up. Somebody, I believe, can correct me, but the baseball scoreboard, that's, that's the grand total. We only agreed to pay for a quarter of that. Is that correct, Ramona?
Correct, a quarter. So there would be an offset revenue that you don't see. We would have purchased, the tax exempt, we already get tax exempt.
Right, okay, and then, so our, our total is actually 14, 18, 75, okay. One thing right below that also, repairs to the racetrack park. Champion showers, when we did the accepted bid, it was quite a bit lower than that. Was there an issue with the, what they did?
Howard, are you on my chance?
I didn't see him on there, unless he's by phone, yeah.
Howard is here. The, that second charge, the second charge there is a repair to a glass block in the concession stand bathroom. That's a separate item. It's written up the same, but it's different. Close that up at all.
It does, because the first one, we only approved 14, 45, 77, so it was 3, 42 over, and that's about the exact offset, pretty close, so. All right, and then. One more thing. Oh, nevermind. On, on page 13, the bulbs came in under, under what we approved, so I was gonna congratulate Howard on that. You save more than, I'm asking, on the other side, so. Good job. Save 386.
Yeah, that will also end up as other savings for the city too in the end, so.
We still have the globes bid though, right? That's not in yet?
They've arrived, I believe, but we haven't seen the bill yet. Is that right, Howard?
That's correct. We did take the delivery. Been invoiced.
Okay, that's all I got, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone?
Here, who weighed the second?
I had Reynolds.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Are there any licenses?
There are no licenses.
Next item is to consider bids for street milling and overlay.
Davis, I'll make a motion to. Accept the low bed. From Rock Road. In the amount of $145,160.56 for street milling and overlay.
Verdic second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to add one comment. When you add the, when you consider all that we approved this year and last, based on this year's budget and $170,000 for street maintenance repair, there's 67,677 available. Contemplating the use of that this year and what would be the best strategy, so that will probably be coming forward for your consideration soon.
Any other discussion?
This is Langen. I just had a question. Obviously, consideration of two bids is allowed or it wouldn't come up, but is it common to just have two?
Um, it's not uncommon. This was a, a bid process where we open bids and advertise, so it wasn't even someone seeking quotes where we may have difficulty getting them, so for whatever reason, we had just two bidders on this.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item, use of tobacco museum donated funds to establish nonprofit status.
Um, for discussion purposes, let's start out with, I'll make a motion to use tobacco museum donated funds to establish nonprofit status.
Verdic second. Okay. Any background on this, Ramona?
Uh, well, there's a memo in your packet. It's from Sarah, so if you have any questions about the details of the proposal, you may recall, we received these donated funds not long ago. And Sarah, who is really leading the charge and trying to reestablish the museum, has a detailed memo on page 17 of your packet. Describes the use of the funds.
So, this is Davis. So Sarah, this is. Just to use those funds, this is no cost to the city at this point. Is that correct?
Sarah, did you catch that?
Oh, sorry, I was on mute, you guys. I apologize. I was trying to reduce any feedback, you know, so. Um, no, Candy, I didn't quite hear the last part of your statement.
Okay, so this is, um, just to use the funds that currently exist, it's currently cost to the city. Is that correct?
Exactly, yes. So, this was in a March 27th memo from Sally Pennekamp herself. I spoke to her on the phone, um, last week, and she, she had expressed in that memo that she sent to the city what she would like to see these funds used for. And this is a project that I've been working on since 2017, when I was only just on the Historic Preservation Commission. And this was the end of 2019, it really came to my attention that our biggest hurdle right now for any kind of advancement is the fact that the nonprofit status doesn't exist anymore, and there are funds, fees associated with that. I had applied for a grant in September. That was a general grant that didn't require nonprofit status. We only made the top 20. We didn't get it, but, you know, I mean, it was a good, I think it was a good sign that it's, it's a good project and something we should do, and especially if those funds are available to us. And were intended to be used to reestablish and grow Edgerton area heritage, I think that that's something that we should do and would also kind of honor Sally's service to that nonprofit when it was, um, when it was active, as she, she was the last serving treasurer of the organization.
I mean, that all makes sense. I'm wondering though, so is this a normal process? I mean, why, I guess I'm wondering, why is it coming before council? Is that a process, Ramona?
Because the money, because the money's been turned over to the city, and I can't use it for that unless the city approves it, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Any other discussion?
Um, Reynolds? So, right now, it's my understanding that the city museum is dissolved. Um, and we'd be paying to kind of bring it back from the dead. Would be taking over management of the city. Would it go back to its previous owners, or would the city be taking over management?
Um, no, the idea would be that once we're allowed to use these funds, I, I didn't want to engage with, uh, because, because the, the law firm that in town has offered to file and, and give us their, offer their services basically pro bono. So I didn't want to work on reinstating the bylaws with all of the people that would be involved in that organization, which would be, I'd have to reach out to the networks we have in the community to see who would be interested in doing that. The idea would be that it wouldn't.
I think Sarah.
You may have gone on mute again, Sarah.
I think Sarah went away again.
Technology's wonderful.
So the city has never committed to ownership of the, um, the collection, Robert, so, um, I think that is, into the future, there will have to be some entity that probably will take ownership of the collection, but at this point, the, the city has, through various modifications of these arrangements, the, what collection has left, much of it is stored in the museum, or. Which the, the city currently owns. So I think that that is yet to be determined ultimately who will, um, take care of the collection over time.
Um, I understand the collection is known by the city. I'm asking about Tobacco City Museum Incorporated, the, just the entity itself. Who's gonna be running that and managing that after we bring this, um. Or after we restore this organization? Who would be?
The non, who?
Be in charge?
Like officers of the nonprofit? That your question?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so. I haven't, ideally, I didn't want to engage further the law firm, and so we had a. If he has been offering his services pro bono for this purpose, we would need those fees only to file with the government, so that's what the money is being used for. Ideally.
Who are the officers? Of the nonprofit?
Yes, for the nonprofit, so we would reach out to various people in the community that might be interested in serving on that board, and the idea would be that it would be a separate entity from the city.
Um, so as of right now, there are no officers of the nonprofit assigned?
At this moment, no, because, because I need to make sure I, I have the money to reinstate it.
Um. This is also Reynolds. I had, um, I had another question too. Um. So, the city, or the museum was dissolved. And that was, I did some basic research from what I could gather, and correct me if I'm wrong, that was a manpower and funding issue. Um, I'm wondering how future closures are gonna be avoided, or whether we're just gonna spend money to have the museum closed down again later.
I will make one point, firstly, asking the city for this money because that's money that was intended for this purpose. But secondly, it only went defined because they didn't file the, for their tax exempt status every year. The proper paperwork wasn't filled out. And that happened as a result of the woman who was originally in charge, or who had been in charge of it last, she, her health declined, and so it just kind of fell away without anybody wanting to spearhead it. Um, so ideally, no. One of the biggest hurdles of not having the nonprofit, nonprofit status is that I can't apply for grants or any other person that's involved with that organization. We're not allowed to apply for grants that are reserved for nonprofit funding as well, and, and I have one group in Wat County that is willing and ready to give funds to this project, but we don't have nonprofit status. And as well, there's another local company. Um, they have a branch anyway in Edgerton, Cipotino Electric, and I've worked with them in my other nonprofit experience in Madison. Um, they have a volunteer program which allows for volunteers to choose an organization to volunteer. And so they provide manpower, but also those hours, hours that they spend using their nonprofit are paid to the nonprofit, and I believe that rate is somewhere between 20 and 25 an hour. So, because we're a defined organization at the moment, we're missing out on available revenue that we, we could have access to, as well as manpower that would help actually get the inventory and documentation process finished. Um, and I met with, in February, I met with, um, one of the women that works at the, at the facility in Edgerton, and they're really looking to have more of a presence in the local community, just to kind of be like, hey, this is who we are, we love being here, we wanna get involved, and we wanna help. So, this has really been my big motivation for not, is my biggest goal, which is doing anything with this project has been to help you, um, have a nonprofit status.
Okay, um. I did some basic research on history for this museum. Um, I don't know where I read that it was a manpower and funding issue, but. All right, it seems like there's more motivation this time. Um, I'd like to. My Robert's Rules of Order is rusty. I believe the correct motion is to make a motion to pick up from the table this issue. Um, because. Right now, we don't have any officers that are gonna take over this after we, um. Bring it back, and I would like to bring it back, but I'd also like just somebody's name who's stepped forward and said that they'd like to do it, just, um. Rather than bringing this back and then finding out that there's not anybody. Or there's not enough people that'd be willing to take interest.
This is attorney Morgan. You're requesting, uh, to table, uh, this, uh, for further information essentially?
I'd like to table this, yeah, for further information until we get like a name of somebody or a group of people that would like to step forward and do this, and, and I want to be clear, like, I would like to vote yes for this. Like, I do think that this is a good idea, Sarah, um.
Well, I mean, I, I guess if you want just one person, and I, still, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if it's a context of interest, but I've been really interested in being the person behind this entity. Um, so if that helps ease your anxiety about this issue, I'm, I'm the tenant with Luke Catter at the depot already, just that our plan is to incorporate the museum into normal business operations, so. I just, I guess my, my question for you, Bill, is, I don't know if it's any kind of context of interest or not.
Well, there, there, essentially, there was a motion on it, uh, made to table, and we, we, we need to see whether or not it's a second, otherwise the museum dies.
Is there a second to most, to the motion to table? Is there a second to the motion to table?
Well, I'm gonna retract my motion. It seems like. If, if Sarah's gonna, uh, put her own name forward, then that'll be fine. If nobody else does it, and Sarah said she's willing to step up, if nobody else does it, then, then I'm, I'm appeased. I'm happy. That's fine. I retract my motion.
All right, thank you. And back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion on this?
I did not. Go ahead. I did not catch the second on that motion. On the, the motion to approve. I had Davis motion, I didn't hear the second.
I heard verdict.
Thank you.
Discussion.
Yes, this is Langen. Uh, I just wanted to share my personal involvement with this. About two years ago, I was given a, um. Box of 100-year-old documents from the Wisconsin Tobacco. And, uh, from a colleague who works at the former Federation of Cooperatives, and he said, is there a home for these old dusty Edgerton documents that live in Madison? Um, because they went there after the cooperative closed, because we're about to move, and he wants them, and I was like, yeah, don't, you know, don't throw those away. Uh, so I hauled them back to Edgerton, but I quickly, upon asking around, figured out that that nonprofit, um, that folks like Judy Nelson and Sally Pennek, yeah, one shepherd in, was no longer around, and. So, those documents are still in my basement because. There's really no place to, you know. Send them in Edgerton, and that's a shame, so this is something I talked about with, that's, I think how I came to know Ms. Bronn a couple years ago, so. It's a baby step, but the formation of this nonprofit is the, um, you know, is the first step that has to happen to, uh, preserving these, uh, types of collectibles in town. My only question would be, we've kind of touched on it, but, you know, I envision this as, once this is up and going, this is a separate entity, just like. J.C.'s or the Tobacco Nays Committee or anything like that. It's its own nonprofit. Uh, it's probably, i- it is proper procedure that the way the funds were turned over by Penny Camp and that we're addressing it here, but I just want to clarify. There's really no oversight or liability by the city after this is take, after this action is taken, correct?
Well, I think Alder, sorry, is somebody else talking? Okay, um. Alder Bronn has said that she'd be willing to oversee it if nobody else would.
It wouldn't be my intention, though, to do it from a, a city perspective, though, like my, my, Casey, to answer your question. Yes, I, I envision it also as a separate entity, and Ramona, I believe you were going to say something as well.
Uh, yeah, I don't believe, I guess, Casey, that this commits the city to anything. We're just a steward of these funds that were given for a purpose, and this is a purpose that, um, I think Sally Penny Camp, as Sarah indicated, has spoken with her, seems like the basis for those to get the whole thing started again. So I don't think that we have committed as a city, just like in the past, even though it's been stored in our facility, we haven't really been, um, had the commitment of managing, owning, taking care of that collection.
That's my understanding as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Let's have a roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Verdict? Verdict?
Yep, sorry, I was muted. Yep.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Redkey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is from the Plan Commission. Consider introducing, approving the first reading and waiving the second read. Edgerton Ordinance 20 dash 01, amending section 22.504, parent 2, rules for particular sign, section 22506, for temporary signs of the Code of Zoning Ordinances.
Yes, motion to approve.
Verdict second.
Any discussion? Did that include waiving the second reading?
Correct.
This is Ann. Why are we waiving the second reading? The, the school district is under a tight timeframe and one of the modifications to the ordinance with the sign they're trying to install on the building. So they've asked for us to expedite this. Thank you.
Reynolds, why is the school, I guess I'm not up to, up to speed. Why is the school district trying to get the city to waive an ordinance involving political signs?
Th- this ordinance has two pieces to it. Robert, the first, one of the pieces is for institutional signs. That's what the district is interested in. The other piece is a political sign. So the school has nothing to do or no conversation regarding political signs. The Plan Commission met earlier this evening and approved a political use permit to allow for these institutional signs on the new school buildings. And it requires this ordinance amendment to accomplish that.
Um, this is Reynolds again. Um, I'm on page 19 of the packet we have. I'm not seeing, uh, a change for section 22504 to, um, what's being changed in that section?
Um, about the bottom of section two where it says institutional uses with an asterisk. And then, um,
We'd be adding that asterisk.
In the text following the asterisk. Then in section three, institutional signs appears a couple of times. Um, those, that language is added. If you happen to have your Plan Commission packet in that packet, it's underlined for you. So it's a little easier to find.
Okay, normally changes are in either italics or bold. Um, this one, all right. I was looking for something else. I see it now.
Normally it is, and for some reason in the transfer of the documents between plan and council, the noted, the noted changes, uh, were lost.
Okay, it was my understanding this ordinance was just for the political messages. I, I understand the school's interest now. Um, all right, I'm good.
Anyone else? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
Verdict?
Yes.
Braun?
Sarah, did I mute you again?
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Redkey?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is to consider introducing and approving the first reading of City of Edgerton Ordinance 20 dash 02, amending sections of chapter 22 zoning ordinances for the Code of General Ordinances.
Verdict, I'll make a motion and approve the first reading City of Edgerton Ordinance 20 dash 02, amending sections of chapter 22 zoning ordinances of the Code of General Ordinances.
This is Ann, I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
Um, I was, this is Reynolds. I was gonna wait for somebody else, but nobody else has a discussion. You know, I read this. It looks like it's mostly just an update to, um, modernize the language. Um, one thing I noticed on page 22 of the packet, um, under paragraph G. I'm reading this correctly. This is saying that, um, uh, if, uh, property owner, um, wants to buy new equipment for property that isn't in compliance with, um, Edgerton zonings, um, because of a grandfather exemption. They have to go through the planning commission to buy new equipment for that, for that business or industry.
Correct. That's what the ordinance says. So the idea is if it's a non-conforming use, you want to have, um, you don't want someone to add significant equipment to a, um, to a development for non-conforming use, making it more non-conforming. So that's the, the concept of the provision.
Um, I'm concerned that this might be used if somebody, somebody with a grandfathered business, um, has something vital to their business break or is damaged and they cannot operate the business without new equipment. I'm concerned that this would just become a ban for them operating their business because they're barred from buying any equipment. If the planning commission would wish to deny them that equipment. And then in another paragraph, it says that if, um, somebody is not operate or somebody is not using their property for the, um, non-conform use for 120 days. They can no longer use it for the grandfathered use. I'm concerned that that, that might be used to do that at some point. Um, I'd like to make a motion to add clause that allows to replace equipment without, without the planning commission's, um, approval. No seconds?
But then can that be something that could be added in discussion here, um, talking to City Attorney Morgan?
Is that something that can be added this evening? It's something that could be added this evening. It's also something to be added at the second reading if it doesn't materially change it. Um, what's the section were you looking at? I'm, I'm, a substitution of new equipment?
Um, this would be 22303, um, section one, paragraph G, the new paragraph G. It's saying that new equipment requires the planning commission's approval. I'm concerned that if we bar the purchasing of new equipment, um, if the not, if the grandfathered use of the property requires this equipment, like it's a, it's a factory and it needs this piece of machinery. That if that equipment breaks down, they wouldn't be able to replace it and they wouldn't be able to continue with their business.
It's not the way I read it.
As I said, that's not that I'm reading that to G. Um, that, that is, uh, that is, uh, allows the, uh, plank mission to permit new equipment, uh, the sort of a non-conforming use. If that makes a non-conforming use, um, uh, it reduces the, the problem. Um, so that, that, I don't think G is someone that we're concerned about. Excuse me, uh, pardon my throat. Um, the sub two, non-conforming structures with a non-conforming, uh, use. Um, you can, you can repair the, the structure. I, I think you can add the, um, equipment. Um, you can sell the equipment. You just can't expand the equipment.
That's for non-conforming structures with a conforming use, right?
Correct.
Non-conforming structures without a conforming use. Um, it just says that if they want to get new equipment, they need the planning commission's approval. And if their old equipment breaks down, then they're kind of tough on top. I'm just worried that, cause a grandfather, government offering, um, people these types of grandfathers clauses, it's my understanding, that's a, that's, that's a fifth amendment right. Um, the government cannot take property or cannot devalue property without compensation. And I don't want to create a situation where somebody's now just not able to do their business because they can't get new equipment. Um, I'd like to, to change it so that they can, they can get, um, replacement equipment without having this commission approval.
Yeah, or, ordinary maintenance and new care of equipment, uh, would be, uh, allowed under, uh, maintenance of non-conforming use, a little bit before that. Uh, this is, um, as long as they're not considered, um, additions. And where G comes in is you can, you're, you're actually expanding that thing to allow the new equipment that wouldn't otherwise be permissible if it actually improves the, uh, uh, the, the, the situation by reducing the impact.
If the equipment is totaled, it can't be repaired though.
I see what you're saying, Robert. You're saying if existing non-conforming equipment or existing equipment in non-conforming use goes totally bad, they can't replace it with new equipment without going through us?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. And I don't like that, which is why, why I made my motion.
All right. If, if the objective is to say that new equipment or new additional equipment, the replacement of equipment versus the addition of new equipment that didn't exist before. Are we, should we be distinguishing between that? Is that your point, Robert?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to do that.
That's what, yeah, I agree.
As Bill said above, it says a lifetime structure repairs or alterations to the um, not exceed 50% of the value of the structure and fixtures and premise. So there, the 50% rule would apply to the replacement. Bill, am I correct in the interpretation of the maintenance?
You are correct.
And then the substitution, the substitution is that someone wants to add equipment that doesn't exist now. If it makes the use more compatible, okay. If you don't like those provisions, then that's what you can obviously try to change, but I don't think it prohibits the replacement of existing equipment.
As long as it doesn't exceed the, uh, 50% of the excess, uh, well, excess value of.
Right.
You're putting that under E. You're using E instead of G for that. Okay. I see what you got.
Yeah.
Does that help at all, Robert?
Yeah, that clears it up. Um,
I think, I think E covers it. That's pretty much, yeah.
With, with the promise of the city prosecutor that they're not gonna use this, this ordinance to, to do what I'm worried about, I'm, I'm not worried about it then.
Okay.
I retract my motion.
What a mor-
Looks like, looks like I gotta move around a little bit. My lights went out. Yeah, your lights went out. I'm not moving. Yeah, either that or it's time to go home. Okay. There we go.
We have a motion to second on the floor here. Is there any discussion on the other one? Hearing none, roll call.
Verdict?
Yes.
Redkey?
Now, is this the motion to approve the ordinance?
This is the, this is the first reading of the ordinance.
Yes. I voted yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion passes. One more item here from plan. Consider approval of an exeterior land division for Milton Hickory Nut Lane, Tona Elvian.
This is Ann. I'll make that motion.
Verdict second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Redkey?
Yes.
Verdict?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen? Davis?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is to fire district report from Chief Andy Pickering.
And Candy, you want to make any? I am right here.
You are, you are on, okay.
Yeah, uh, Candy, did you want to make any comments before I just kind of go into a quick rundown?
I do not because we've not held a meeting. So I really do not have anything to say. Just to hear your report.
There you go. Um, district activity has actually continued to increase, uh, not only year over year, but throughout the year. Uh, despite the, um, safer at home, uh, there, the activity's been relatively strong. We're, uh, 318 calls, uh, so far for the year, 78 calls in the month of April itself, both fire and EMS. The most notable for, uh, the city of Edgerton was a fire at the high school in the maintenance, uh, garage facility that appears to be electrical in origin and the, uh, insurance company is still continuing to bring in some electrical engineering experts to try to sort out what might've actually caused that fire. Uh, the other, uh, big one was the, uh, fire at Lakeland Campground, which is outside of the, uh, outside of the city. Obviously we were automatic aid, uh, to Milton on that one. Um, relatively significant fire and, uh, kind of a unique one in its, uh, in its makeup. But, um, so activity wise, uh, we continue to be relatively busy. We have, uh, suspended all, uh, fire inspections, um, and that's consistent with, uh, DSPS orders. Um, we're trying to develop a plan, uh, cause the, the state allowed us to, um, or recommended that we suspend fire inspection activity, but they did not eliminate the requirement to complete all the inspections uh, by the balance of the year in order to stay eligible for the 2% dues. So we've been working on a plan to make sure once we can get back, um, going with the inspections that we can make all that up and make sure we don't put any of the 2% dues money at risk. Um, a lot of things, um, have been put in place to deal with our current situation. Most notably, what we did, um, was restructure our crews so that we could, uh, prevent or at least minimize as much as possible any form of cross-contamination where, let's say you have somebody that's working day shift, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, which puts them across three different shifts of 24-hour personnel. So a single person could literally wipe out the entire department, um, in, in that situation. So we moved everybody to shift structures so that we could limit the potential of cross-contamination. We put a lot of really unique rules in place for our paid-on-call personnel so that they are not in a situation where they're doing any kind of cross-contamination as well. And I think everybody is looking forward to getting through this, but, uh, so far it seems to be working. We, um, and I think I've mentioned the last time, I don't know if Chief Kowalski is on from the PD, but both Chief Kowalski and I sit on a call, uh, Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. Chief Kowalski and I sit on a call Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays with all of the fire, EMS, hospital, Public Works, Highway Department from across the county. And there's been a really, really good amount of coordination between all the entities in the county. For those that are kind of following what's going on around the state, you'll notice that Rock County and Walworth County are some of the hotbeds right now, and that is being driven predominantly by the Bird's Eye Food Plant in Darien, which happens to only sit about three miles outside of Rock County. So a large number of the people in that plant do live in Rock County, so that's driving the numbers that we're seeing down here right now. Um, I think maybe I'll just cut it off there, and I'd certainly take any questions if anybody has, but that's kind of the, the highlights.
So, Davis, um, with respect to, I know you had mentioned we're kind of considered a hotspot now. Do we know about the peeping? Have we peaked? Do, are they saying we will? We have? We aren't, or what?
So it, it's, it's a good question, Candy, and I think we're all trying to read into the statistics to try to tell us what the answer is. I think, I, I think it's fair to say we have certainly reached a plateau where we have community spread across the entire county, and, and quite honestly, all the counties around us. So we've reached a plateau. It's not continuing to expand in the, in the way that we saw it expanding coming out of March and into April. But we also haven't started to see the, the decline on the other side, which is I think what everybody is, is hoping we can get to. The first thing that people will tell you about that decline is that we're obviously ramping up testing dramatically, and especially down here, the Bird's Eye Plant, and there's another plant that, that's under investigation right now in the southern part of the county. So they're ramping up testing tremendously, which is of course driving up the numbers. But the key statistic inside those numbers is the percentage of people that are testing positive of the group that's being tested. And the governor's, uh, Badger Bounce Back Plan calls for when that percentage starts to drop, that's the positive sign we're looking for. And unfortunately, we're sort of staying even. That percentage has not been dropping either here in Rock County or across the state. So the general consensus is we're at a plateau, just not at the point where it's starting to decline yet.
Okay, thanks. I think you answered. My other question was about testing and how comfortable you felt. It sounds, testing is available if needed.
Yeah, they, they are still, they are still limiting testing to people who are showing trigger symptoms that say, yes, this person should be tested. We're, we're not at a point where if 100 of us walked in, they'd test all of 100 of us right now. There's just not the number of test kits. But certainly anybody who exhibits any of the symptoms, we're able to get them tested almost immediately.
Good, I know you and Chief Kowalski are very hard keeping people safe, so you can keep the rest of us safe. So I, for one, truly appreciate everything both of you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else have anything else for the chief?
I wanted to say thank you for all your hard work.
On, on behalf of all your police officers, all your firefighters, all the nurses in the community, and everybody else that were in this together, you, you're welcome. This is certainly unique, and we're trying, I mean, we're learning something new almost every day, so it's, it is unique, but I, we appreciate all the community support we're getting.
And we appreciate how adaptable and flexible and amazing all of you have been out there on the front line, so we appreciate you.
That means a lot, does. I know on the police department side, it does. Thank you.
That'll lead us into the next item here. Consider declaration honoring Police Week.
So this, this is Davis. I'll make a motion to, um, accept the Declaration Honoring Police Week.
Braun, second.
So motion and a second. Does everybody have their copy? Should I read it?
I might add to recognize May 10 through the 16th, 2020, as Police Week.
Okay, I will, I will then read it. City of Edgerton Declaration to recognize National Police Week 2020 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those official officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy, whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Edgerton Police Department. Fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-six assaults against law enforcement officers in 2018, resulting in approximately 18,005 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of those of these dedicated public services are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. Whereas 307 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, including 135 officers killed in 2019 and 172 officers killed in previous years. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that this Edgerton City Council formally designates May 10th through the 16th, 2020, Week in the City of Edgerton, Wisconsin, and publicly includes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation, and also, and to also remember all the law enforcement officers who made the ultimate sacrifice protecting those communities. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Redkey? Verdict?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mayor Alderperson's staff reports, along with the fire EMS. Lost a very valuable asset to the community when Nancy Dickinson last week, she had an impact on numerous EMT, all positive, and her patient care was some of the best that almost any of those EMTs and myself had seen. So we extend our sympathies to her family. And that is all I have.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Is that a question?
I was making sure that was the next, the next thing on the agenda.
Davis?
It is the next thing. So there is a second?
Yes.
Motion and a second to adjourn, roll call.
Braun?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Verdict?
Oh, why not? Yes. We are adjourned. Hopefully we don't have to keep doing this.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good night, all.